No, no, no.
I'm going to go ahead and call the city council meeting this evening, Monday, November 19th, 2012, to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham Mejia.
Here.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Protempo.
President.
Mayor Edgar.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Stevens and stay standing for the invocation by Councilmember Kusamoto.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Lord, I just thank you that we can all be here doing the business of the city. I ask that you put your hedge of protection around us about the men and women who wear the flag of the United States to protect us. And, Lord, just be with us as we do the business of the city in Jesus' -- in your great name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. I'm going to ask that the city council members join me for item 5A, which is a presentation proclamation to Catherine McNally.
What a great evening tonight to be able to recognize a great business person in our community. Everybody that's always been over to McNally Electric, I think all of us have done business, redone our house, been a part of that. And so today, we get to celebrate Small Business Saturday, November 24th. What I'd like to do is I'd like to read a little bit of this proclamation and then I'd ask if you would say a couple of words for us. Okay. "City of Los Alamos believes that small businesses are the backbone of our community and the economy and the glue that holds the community together. According to the U.S. Small Business Association, there are approximately 28 million small businesses in the U.S. that represent more than 99 percent of the American companies and create two-thirds of the net new jobs and generate half of the private gross domestic product. Small businesses employ half the employees in the private sector of the U.S., add value in their community, and locally owned independent businesses contribute positively through taxes and jobs. The City of Los Alamos supports the effort of local small businesses and recognizes the critical role they play in the community. Advocacy groups and public and private organizations across the country have endorsed Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. The residents of our community and communities across the country are being asked to support small businesses emergence on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Therefore, I, Troy Edgar, the mayor of the City of Los Alamos, and with concurrence of the city council, do hereby proclaim November 24, 2012, as Small Business Saturday."
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Edgar. I really appreciate this and I appreciate the city, those here in the city who support business. We're very proud to say that we've been here in town since 1965. We've been in our location since 1979. And we're really proud to be here. And during these economic challenging times, we just appreciate your support.
You're very welcome.
One other thing to the community. So, you know, our community is very unique because we've got a lot of small businesses. You know, I want to also acknowledge, we've got Judy Claboe out in the audience who led the chamber for many years. But, you know, our community is made up by our small businesses, just like McNally Electric. Not only do they give back to the community by being a part of stuff like this, small business means small business. It doesn't mean go to Costco. It doesn't mean go to Walmart. It means go to our small businesses. These, the small businesses represented tonight by McNally are the businesses that actually give back to the community. They contribute to all of the activities in our community, to the nonprofits, to our youth sports, to everything that you can see. And I would just plead for the whole city council, I would just ask that everybody stand up, help our small businesses out there. As we're getting ready for Christmas, I see the Christmas tree lot is out there over at Ginnall's. Head over to the electrical shop and get everything you need. Just go out and support all the businesses. Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, we have a presentation from Becky Esparza from Orange County Human Relations providing a yearly update to the council. How are you doing this evening, Becky?
I'm here tonight, as you said, to update you about the role of Orange County Human Relations played in the city, of your grand city of Los Alamos, over the last year, and to present you copies of our annual report, which I believe was handed out to you earlier. As cities work to manage the challenges to our very existence, we have to examine every expenditure to gauge its place in the hierarchy of needs. For some cities, nonprofits, and businesses, this year has been a year to face down bankruptcy. For all, it has been hard times with layoffs and downsizing. I know this for a fact for our city of, my city of Stanton. Some cities struggle this year as various conflicts screw into public demonstrations, where civility was often the first victim and budget-bursting emergency expenditures followed. Orange County Human Relations, in partnership with cities, maintain the capacity to serve as an asset in healing these tense times and save cities untold tax dollars in the process. We do this by mediating conflict, creating safe, inclusive neighborhoods and schools, developing diverse leaders, and building understanding and respect among all our residents. Many of our services are countywide and not easily broken down by cities, such as human relations training for police officers, hate crime victim support, promoting civility by being a voice of reason and respect, as well as community forums and educational programs open to the public. I would like to share the following data about some of our additional services over the last year in the city of Los Alamos. We mediated 25 cases in the community or courts where one of the parties was a resident of Los Alamos in the fiscal year 2011, 2012. In collaboration with Los Alamos Police, we documented one hate incident, not a hate crime, in the city of Los Alamos in 2011. We helped build a sense of community with Los Alamos residents and staff through the hate crimes victim support. In conclusion, as we began the 20th year of Orange County Human Relations partnerships with Orange County cities, it is notable to recognize that in addition to these specific services we provided in Los Alamos this year, we also worked to maintain the capacity of Orange County Human Relations to assist when the human relations crisis hits. This year, our capacity was critical in being able to help the city of Fullerton in the Kelly Thomas case, the city of Anaheim in the civil unrest after the police shootings, and the city of San Clemente to apply asset-based community development in the Latino community in the face of gang violence and community, gang violence, I'm sorry, and the city of San Yana to bring Latino and Jewish communities together. And in previous years, in the cities of Westminster, Huntington Beach, Cypress, Stanton, Placencia, Laguna Hills, and many other cities who face challenging intergroup conflicts that boiled over into the civic arena. Our cities may not have major conflicts every year, but when the crisis hits, it can be enormously expensive to address in public safety, human suffering, and reputation costs. Significant savings can be achieved if you have a strong human relations organization with significant capacity, and I'm glad to say your city is one of them. If the mayor would come down, I'd like to present him with this award, and thank you for supporting Human Relations in the city of Orange County.
Thank you.
Next presentation is from Mike Hurst. He's the director from the Orange County Vector Control District, providing an update on Orange County Vector Control. And also, our board member from the City of Los Alamos is Councilmember Mejia.
I'm the chairman.
All right. Oh, Jerry.
Chair.
How are you doing?
No problem. Good evening, Mayor, and member of the council. My name is Jared Dever. I'm the Director of Communications for Orange County Vector Control District. And I'm going to be speaking with you tonight on some of the vector control activities that we perform throughout the year in 2012. So, but first, I want to start with the definition of a vector. That way, we're all on the same page, we're all talking about the same definition of this word. A vector is any insect or animal, rodent, or of public health significance capable of harboring or transmitting the causative agent of human disease or capable of causing human discomfort or illness. So, with that being said, Orange County Vector Control District is a public health agency. We are not a pest control agency. We are, we operate under the California Health and Safety Code, and we are charged with the control of mosquitoes, rats, fire ants, and flies. So for mosquitoes, we have an active control program as well as a education program. Rats, we primarily provide education about the reduction of rats in the community. And fire ants, we have an active control program. And flies, we provide quite a bit of information on that as well. I'm going to be speaking about two major topics tonight because these are the most prevalent vector-borne diseases in Orange County. And those two diseases are West Nile virus, as you undoubtedly heard in the media, is hot again this year, a lot of human cases throughout the Midwest and the South. And I'll also be speaking about flea-borne typhus. That may be a new one for some of you in the audience. So, I'm going to start with West Nile virus, which is transmitted by the mosquito. And just for a quick review, the mosquito lifecycle, the female mosquito is the only mosquito that takes a blood meal. She needs the blood meal to produce her eggs. Once she's produced these eggs, she lays them on the surface of stagnant water. About 24 to 48 hours later, the larvae hatch from these eggs, and they go through four instar stages where they develop into, and then they go into the pupal stage where they transform into the adult mosquito and start the whole lifecycle all over again. All right. So, in Los Alamos, we're actually challenged by a multitude of different breeding sources. And these include mitigated wetlands, these like micro-wetland habitats that are created to handle urban runoff, storm drains, and this is what we commonly refer to as urban drool, areas that are wetted throughout the year. Small sources like flower pots and things that are found around your yards can breed mosquitoes and often do. Since 2006, we've been challenged by foreclosed properties that have unmaintained swimming pools in the backyards. We do aerial surveillance throughout the year where we actually identify these properties and try to keep on top of them. In addition, in Los Alamos, we treat about 2.8 miles of flood channel throughout the mosquito breeding season and about seven miles of street gutters. Our underground storm drain team, they treat about 70 miles total of underground storm drains. And as you are all well aware, you have many golf courses in Los Alamos. And I wanted to spend just a moment dispelling some of the myths of the ponds at the golf courses, because we hear this quite often from residents. They believe that these ponds are a primary source of mosquito breeding. There are three factors that work in favor for these ponds that make them less attractive for mosquito breeding. And that has to do with their agitation. As you can see from this image, you see some of those aerators and agitators that are present in these ponds. These keep the surface of the pond constantly in motion, far less attractive to a mosquito to lay her eggs on that water. They also, they have other predators, natural predators, and they also have predators that we supply in those waters, like mosquito fish, that eat the mosquito larvae. And as you'll notice, they're quite well groomed. There's not a lot of heavy vegetation that surrounds these ponds on the edges where mosquitoes would naturally occur in the shallower areas. And so, for those reasons, they tend to be actually very poor water bodies to breed mosquitoes in. That being said, that is not always the case. These ponds can get out of management. Algal blooms can sometimes overcome these ponds, as you can see there in that image. And in this circumstance, these would breed mosquitoes. But our technicians are constantly on watch for these kind of situations, and we address them immediately to ensure that they, in fact, do not breed mosquitoes. In this image, the much more likely candidate for mosquito breeding within the city and adjacent to these golf courses is the channel. Channels, they don't flow consistently. They're re-wetted intermittently, and so that causes them to have ponding and pocketing of water that occurs. And in these stagnant pockets, that's where really the mosquito breeding can take a foothold. We also have a large base in Los Alamos, as obviously you're all aware. And there are many challenges on the base. We work very closely with the environmental staff on the base to address both fly mitigation as well as mosquito production issues and also other rodent issues that could potentially be coming from the base. As I mentioned, we do conduct aerial surveillance, and currently in the city, we have 24 pools that have been identified from foreclosed properties that we have under treatment regularly right now. And the good news is that these foreclosed properties, they are usually quite frequently turned over to new owners, which come in and correct the pools. But that does necessitate us performing aerial surveillance about once a year. The second disease I want to talk about tonight is flea-borne typhus. You all may know this disease by its former name of murene typhus. And flea-borne typhus, it's been renamed flea-borne typhus to be more descriptive of its transmission. So, I'm going to describe the suburban transmission cycle. Flea-borne typhus is transmitted by a bacteria that's found in a species of flea called the cat flea. It's a very aptly named flea because it's found on cats. So, in this instance, feral cats and other backyard wildlife, like opossums. So, the transmission cycle, the cat fleas are found on these urban and backyard wildlife. They come in contact with domesticated pets, in particular, your cat. In backyard situations, the fleas will jump and be transmitted to your domesticated animal. They will then bring those fleas into the property with you where they can exit that animal and then bite you, and then transmitting the bacteria to you, infecting you with flea-borne typhus. That's the doom and gloom. The good news is flea-borne typhus is entirely preventable and treatable disease, unlike West Nile virus, which does not currently have a treatment. It is preventable by simple topical application of flea control products on your pets. That breaks that bridge between the cat fleas from urban wildlife getting onto your pets. Simple solution, it just requires a little bit of maintenance, and it is treatable. So if you do actually acquire flea-borne typhus, it's a simple treatment of doxycycline that will resolve it. The reason why I wanted to mention this this evening, as you can see by this chart, this charts the number of human flea-borne cases since 1933 in the county, all the way up until 2012. And as you can see by this chart, since 2006, there has been a marked increase in cases of flea-borne typhus. And actually, this year is the record year for flea-borne typhus in Orange County, resulting in 27 human cases thus far. Our website is full of all information about vectors that we cover that I didn't address this evening. You can also submit a service request there if you're having any issues. And just kind of a reinforcement point to not only the council, but to the audience members and those at home, when you need help with a vector, feel free to contact us. The council is a good place to, you know, sound your issues, but honestly, they're going to turn around and tell us about these vector control problems. And we would like it if you would contact us immediately, so that way, we can address these problems much, much more quickly and directly. And I would be remiss if I didn't talk about our other vectors really quickly. We do have a rat control program. We have a red imported fire ant control program, so if you have red imported fire ants in your lawn, please do not try to treat these. You eventually move the colonies around if you try to self-treat. We ask that you leave these ants alone and you call us immediately, and we will come out and treat them for you. We have a fly education program as well as a tick and tick-borne, tick-borne disease education program as well. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Marilyn?
Hi, dear. Thank you so much for this presentation.
My pleasure.
If you do not have pets, but you have feral cats in your yard, which many of the people in the community do. The, there's, what is the best way to, to make sure that, like, your grandchildren or your children are not bitten by these fleas?
That's a great question. And started, part of that starts with control of the fleas on the feral cats. Now, there are oral, there is an oral formulation of flea control medicine that you can actually mix into the food. Often, these feral cats have a supportive mechanism or a human that's feeding them and sustaining them. Now, that medicine can be mixed in with their food. But I will tell you honestly, it's not 100 percent effective, and it is not as effective as the topical flea control products, but at least it's a start. The biggest thing you can do is discourage these animals from coming onto your property. So reducing any food that you have in the backyard that they would find attractive to come into your yard and actually, you know, deposit those fleas would be the second step. And unfortunately, there isn't, animal control generally will not come out for feral cats.
They won't. And believe me, we do not feed them, but they're still like my yard and many of my neighbors. And is the symptom just a flea bite? Is that what the symptom is?
Many that actually acquire flea-borne typhus do not remember receiving a flea bite. But yeah, you'll have a flea bite. About seven to 10 days later, you're going to start exhibiting flu-like symptoms. There'll be a very high fever that accompanies this, generally in the 104, 104 territory. Unfortunately, they're mostly flu-like symptoms. Sometimes, it's associated with a rash on the mid-trunk area, but it needs confirmatory blood test in order to determine whether you have flea-borne typhus or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
All right. Quick question. You had mentioned the algae bloom, and it almost looked like the one location that you showed us was the Navy Golf Course from the aerial shot. How long does it take to clean that up, and what was the impact for the homes that were very close to that?
So, those sites are under constant observation. They're checked about twice a week. And so, our technicians would notice that issue right away, and they would be able to apply a granular pesticide into that water body to prevent any of the mosquito breeding while they were correcting the hydrology of that pond, where they were getting the pH balance back in check and actually getting it to the appropriate water level where the temperature of the water wasn't as high, so it would discourage that algae growth. Often, the lands management team will go out and they will actually physically remove that algae from those ponds, and that helps really clear them up much more, much more quickly. But our technicians are vigilant, and they, as soon as that algae is removed as well, because you'll often lose a lot of the natural predators in that water body, will resupply mosquito fish to that pond, and they do a great job of eating mosquito larvae.
All right. When the algae bloom comes up, does it in any way take the oxygen out of the water that causes the fish to die?
That's correct. It definitely outcompetes a lot of the other, the other objects in the water that need that oxygen. So, it's important that it's removed quickly.
Yeah. Last question. You mentioned that within the city of Los Alamos, we have 24 properties that are vacant right now that do have pools.
Right.
Can you walk me through the monitoring system that you're doing on that? Are the pools drained or?
We don't drain the pools for a number of reasons. The monitoring starts with the aerial surveillance, so we identify the pools based on a visual code. Obviously, they look like a backyard lagoon. Those properties are then geocoded. They're sent into a list for our technicians to go out and actually physically visit to confirm whether those pools have been corrected or whether there's still an issue. In foreclosed properties, access is often the issue. Determining the owner, the current owner of the property, is very difficult. And when we do gain access into the backyard, we'll then put it on a treatment cycle. Draining a pool is exactly the opposite of what we'd want to do to a pool. Unfortunately, because of our overwatering practices in California, the moment we drain a pool, it would usually be refilled to a capacity that would breed mosquitoes within a couple of days. You know, sprinklers will refill it. A periodic rain event would refill it, and we just don't have the resources to go out and pump that pool, say, every week. So, we like long-term solutions with the least amount of impact to the environment. So, we actually put mosquito fish in those pools as well, and they will take care of that property indefinitely. We do go back periodically and check on them to make sure that they're still healthy and the population exists. And that really is the, until that property is corrected, then we can sign it off officially.
Very good. It was a good answer, and I guess there's a second precautionary measure would be that if you're a neighbor to one of these residences or properties and you know that the house is empty, and you see something like that, get a hold of Vector Control. Give them a call. Have them come out so they can monitor it and make sure that we're all safe. I can just see those fish in there, and if I was a kid, I'd look at that and I'd go, "That's a piranha," you know? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to Mike and Jared for coming tonight and giving this presentation. Will you make a comment as to the number of West Nile virus deaths that we've had, and then also maybe go into how significant it is that we address this and why Vector's so important?
Absolutely. Now, the deaths in Orange County this year, we have been very fortunate. We did not have any deaths this year in Orange County. We had a number of human infections. That being said, there were no human infections in Los Alamos, so.
Right. I just wanted them to have an overview of, I know we go throughout the state and say how many that we had had. It just, I just want them to understand how important Vector is to maintaining these pools and ponds and little decorations you have in your yard that may sit stagnant because it does actually claim lives, and that's something that's very significant.
Yes.
I just wanted to add that you have a very quick response. When people have contacted you, I've gotten nothing but accolades about how quickly your technicians responded, how effective and efficient that they were, and I just wanted to thank Vector for doing that. And then also, for anyone who's more interested, do you provide tours of Vector for community members?
Yeah, absolutely. Our facility is open to the public, and we'd love to have you down and show you around some of our specialty equipment. You saw a couple of the slides. We make all of our own equipment for vector control. There is no, Vectors RS, where you go and you buy the stuff off the shelf. So, we have a variety of unique equipment and different methodology that we'd love to share that information with the public.
Well, and your lab's extremely interesting. They've got some real cutting-edge technology there. So, I would just encourage anybody who has any kind of interest or concerns about this that they could contact Vector and set that up. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
All right. What I'm going to do is I'm going to add something here after our presentations, but before oral communications. City Attorney Sandy Levin asked me that she wanted to make an announcement. Sandy?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Yes, I wanted to make an announcement to the members of the council and city staff and the residents and businesses of Los Alamos that effective no later than January 31, I will be leaving my post as city attorney of Los Alamos. I am available to assist the city in finding a new city attorney, and I will do my utmost to ensure that there is a seamless transition moving forward. I would like to acknowledge the residents and businesses of Los Alamos for making this city such a strong community, and thank those who have contacted me to express their support and appreciation over the time I have served here. This community has so many caring and dedicated volunteers. It is really very impressive. Secondly, I would like to thank the city council and the city staff for working with me and our legal team on important issues that impact this city each and every day. Even as we grapple with contentious issues where opinions and perspectives differ, the vast majority of you have been supportive, complimentary, and responsive over the course of my time here. All of you have been dedicated and diligent with the best interests of the city in mind. I know the community is very proud of the level of service they receive from their staff and elected officials. I am very proud too of our accomplishments here in Los Alamos, ranging from the successful collaboration with your neighboring cities on issues relating to the JFTB when I first arrived, to the staff training programs we implemented over the past two years, to the successful defense of all claims and litigation without a penny assessed against the city as a result of legal claims during our tenure, and most recently, the modernization of the telephone users tax that the voters overwhelmingly approved this month. Each one of those accomplishments was the result of thoughtful collaboration by many people to address significant concerns facing the city of Los Alamos. Finally, I wanted to extend my congratulations to newly elected council members, Murphy and Gross. I know that each one of you, along with your colleagues already serving on the city council, will ensure that Los Alamos has a promising and prosperous future. Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve here.
Great. Anybody on the council want to make any comments at this point?
Do you?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Sandy. You've done an excellent job. It's not too often that we can have a city attorney that was so proactive in responding to council questions and questions from the community. And I think a big part of it
And I think a big part of it is that we actually had a city attorney that was also an elected official at one point, and so she has a little insight on how quickly we need responses on different issues. It's difficult, in a position of an attorney, to make everybody happy, and I don't think it's ever expected. But I appreciate her quick response time on any issues that we had, the fairness that she tried to do her job in, and the effectiveness all around, you know, as far as our city attorney, and I know you had the best interest of the city at heart, too. So I, as a resident, I'm going to miss you. All right?
Thank you for your kind comments.
Yes, I was very sad when Sandy called and told me, although I am not going to say that I wasn't surprised. As most of you know, I've been on the city council since 1994 with a two-year hiatus. And when I first was elected, we had a city attorney that had been with the city for a long time, Tom Allen, and he was, in my estimation, the very best. We've had many city attorneys in the 16 years that I have served on this council, but Sandy, as far as I'm concerned, is equal to or even better than Tom Allen was. Anytime we have, as council members, wanted information, she has always been available. I think it's very difficult, in her position, to make everybody happy, but I think that she has always had the best, I know she's always had the best interest of our city at hand. And not very many cities have a city attorney who has argued before the Supreme Court, and Sandy has done that. So we have, sitting here, the very best. And so I'm sorry that you're going to be leaving, Sandy, but I hope that other people in the community will let you know how much they appreciate, before the end of January, how much you have done for us and your professionalism, the value that your firm has been to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jerry, do you have anything to say? Or Warren?
I'll keep mine private after the meeting.
So I definitely also wanted to extend just a heartfelt thanks. You know, it's interesting, being the mayor, it's a job that you get for a year at a time. So you take over in December, and you get a year stint, and for the last two times I've been mayor, 2009 and this year, is I had the opportunity of being here when Sandy came on as the city attorney. And it was just interesting is that at that time, we were bringing in a team with Jeff Stewart and Sandy, and it was a great partnership. When you're working on the city council and you're going through a lot of stuff, and whoever's in the mayor job, you have to, a lot of interaction to kind of keep the flow of information going, to get the agendas ready, and it just was a really good partnership. So I've had the pleasure of seeing Sandy operate with Jeff Stewart in the beginnings, coming in and getting that team going. And then as we've had this transition over the last year, and we've been able to promote within, and had Angie Avery become our city manager, and she moved up, and everybody in her organization moved up into Parks and Recreation, Sandy provided that stability in the management team, and not just in the legal side, but in the management team, to be able to make sure that the city has that foundation. And, you know, some of the things, I knew from the very beginning in 2009, you know, to be able to endure a lot of things, as a small city, a lot of people say, you know, "Hey, Los Alamos, you know, can you really leverage being such a small city and have an impact regionally?" And, you know, when we had that composting issue at the base in 2009, we were really looking at a tough situation, and I just want to highlight that Sandy did an outstanding job, because, you know, we needed to maintain the relationship at the base, make it better. At the same time, we needed to play hardball and get something stopped. And Sandy came in, we were there with Cypress, Garden Grove, Seal Beach, Rossmore, and ourselves, and everybody came with their city attorneys, and Sandy, the attorneys had Sandy take the lead. And, you know, we couldn't have done that without you. That not only helped us deal with the situation, we have the best relationship we could with the base after the way we dealt with that. We didn't come in punching. We came in and really tried to have a balanced view. But I also think that it also brought all the cities close together, and since then, we've done a tremendous amount of things, including just ending the 405 corridor working group, where with those relationships, now we've added Huntington Beach and Costa Mesa and Fountain Valley. We're able to do more as a regional group and have a major impact. So again, Sandy, I just want to tell you, very appreciative. You know, I think that your firm, I think many of us that do stuff outside of the city on the regional level, at SCAG, at OCOC, et cetera, you know, we've come in contact with your company, so I knew your company way before, you know, I knew you or you coming here, and the reputation of your firm has always been outstanding. So, you know, on behalf of our city council, I just wanted to tell you again, thank you very much, and I think our success of where we're at financially, where we're at as a community right now, you had a significant part in it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and please know that even after my tenure here ends, I am available if there's anything I can do to assist. If you have any questions or need any historical perspective or continuity, any one of you, please feel free to contact me.
Thank you. What I'm going to go ahead and do is I'm going to open it up to oral communication. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward and speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks will be limited to no more than five minutes per speaker. I'm going to go ahead and open it up at this point. Anybody that would like to approach the council, please do.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. First, I'd like to congratulate the winners from the chief executive, the commander-in-chief, all the way down to our own Mr. Murphy, Mr. Gross, for the excellent job they did campaigning, keeping it clean, and running fair and clean campaigns. Congratulations. I wish you all the best of luck. Secondly, I'd like to ask the council if you can please consider creating an open Wi-Fi access in this room, so those of us who are here can communicate. It would be appreciated. A number of city councils, cities do that. It makes it easier for the reporters to be able to check things, for people who are going to be public speaking to be able to go online and confirm or check their data and facts before they get up in front of you. Third item, I requested some time ago, some information, Wendy, regarding the request I made of the city attorney and the council regarding Brown Act violations. I received a response from Wendy, and I'd like to thank her for being so clear and responsive. We have a great city staff, and fortunately, the response was that the records were attorney-client privileged that I asked for. What I asked for was to know if there had been any communication, because I had not heard anything about my request. And I would like to ask that the city council drop any claims of privilege to this, so I can find out what happened, since there has been no announcement of what happened regarding that. Apparently, there were communications to and from the city attorney. This is not that I'm under litigation. It was a request from a citizen, and it's not an item that I believe should be covered, so I'd like to ask the members of the city council if they'd be kind enough to agree to allow me to see those records. I received the excellent brochure from Parks and Recs. It's wonderful to see community partners. As a matter of fact, as I was looking through the community partners, I was pleased to know that I do business with most of them. It's great to see these businesses partnering with our rec department and with our city. I was also pleased to see, for instance, what I took to be an advertisement from Dr. Chang, and another one from Consolidated Disposal right on the front. I was a little confused, though, especially in light of news from, I believe it was either News Enterprise or OC Breeze, which said the city was somehow partnering again with nonprofits in their community. And this time for a tree lighting ceremony at St. Isidore with the Chamber of Commerce. What bothers me, and I'm sure everyone's going to remember me from the sign behind you, and I'm going to actually avoid the whole Christmas tree and tree lighting, holiday tree lighting issue together. That's not it. It's very similar to what bothered me about giving money to the Chamber, giving our tax dollars to the Chamber of Commerce for our wings, wheels, and rotors, so that they could give more money to their nonprofit that they choose to give the money to. I don't think our tax dollars should be shuffled off to these nonprofits and giving these nonprofits in the city that, unfortunately, members of my city council are on the board of or are actively involved in this money. It's not right. It's my tax dollars. I don't see us giving the money to Laura Herzog and her group, and they go out and really actually help children and families, and it's a wonderful organization. I am tired of seeing our tax dollars being spent, being given away, gifts of public funds to these selected charities, and I would hope in the future that we will not be doing this. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Good evening.
Well, I'm not always politically correct, and I really don't care. But anyway, I've been in business for 36 years, and I love this city, and I follow it, and I follow these council meetings. And last month, I did watch the council meeting, and Sandra, I hate to see you leave, but I don't think I could have sat where you sat through the whole meeting. So no one should be treated like that, number one. And then, secondly, from what JM was just saying, the money from Wings, Wheels, and Rotors does not go to the nonprofits. It goes to the...
Soldiers, welfare.
But it's the welfare over at the base. And I mean, if we can't support our soldiers, I don't know who can. Thirdly, you can go to the Christmas lighting. It's a Christmas tree lighting. I also understood there was going to be a menorah there. I don't know what the problem is. I mean, I have lots of Jewish friends that have so-called Christmas trees and Santa Claus at their house, so I don't know why this has to come up again and again. And then, thirdly, I'd like to thank both Councilman Mejia and Kuzamoto for your efforts with the state election. Because of your efforts, I am so delighted that Troy is here on this council, and will be here for the next two years. He's pro-business, as far as I'm concerned. He's one of the best men around. He stands up for what's right, as most of my friends do. And I mean, it's just what's right and what's best for the most. So anyway, whatever it takes, I'm with you guys, and, you know, if the city, thank God you are pro-business, or some of you are, because people need to know that it's those sales tax dollars that our businesses bring in that provide so many of the services here in this city. And when everybody keeps talking about the people I'm serving, the people I'm serving, like it's the people against the business, we're all one. So, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sorry. I'd just like the community to know that the Christmas tree that is going to be at the Historical Plaza is not church-related, and it is donated by one of the nonprofits. And a 12-foot Christmas tree is not nickels and dimes. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and move it on to register major expenditures. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second. Go ahead for roll call, Beth.
Councilmember Graham Mejia?
Aye.
Councilmember Kuzamoto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tempo?
Aye.
Mayor Edgar?
Aye. Next up is the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be moved on by one motion unless the council member requests separate action on a specific item. Anybody want to pull any of the items?
I'd like to pull item A.
All righty.
I'd like to pull the warrants, please.
All right. If there's nothing else, can I have somebody to move the balance?
I'll make a motion to move the balance.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
First item, back to the consent calendar, item number 8A, approval of the minutes. Marilyn?
Yes, on page seven of the minutes, at the very bottom, it says a motion and a second, Graham Mejia and Kuzamoto carried 3-1, and it was actually by 3-2, because it says Edgar and Poe cast a dissenting vote. And there were five, so it should be 3-2. Small thing, but it should be corrected. And with that, I'll move approval.
Mayor, I have all the system.
Go ahead, Jerry.
On page four, under item A, Wendy, I'm not sure if these are typos or if I said something and it's being interpreted differently. On that paragraph, starts with Councilmember Mejia, the fifth line down, I just want to make sure from the fifth line down, the next four, if we could go over those and verify them, if you're going to pull them for Marilyn, just for me to check the record. I didn't view the video, so I don't know. I just want to make sure it gives the right depiction. Once again, if you could state for the record my opposition to the format of minutes and hope for them to be returned to summary. I just think it gives a little bit more information for the council and the residents. And with that, Mayor, I'll go ahead and pass it back.
Okay. Let me get a motion to move that.
I'll move approval.
Okay. And to clarify the motion is that we will clarify the changes and go back and read the tape and basically update whatever Jerry might have said on there.
You should just take a second.
Yeah, not a problem. I'll go ahead and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay. Next item is item 8B, warrants. Councilmember Kuzamoto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, city manager, I'd asked last time, and I thought it was clear, about getting some kind of a staff report included in the consent calendar about payments made to Mr. Underwood. Again, the difficulty, the struggle I have is that he is a sitting commissioner on the TV commission and a contractor to the city. So I think in this case, we really need to have some staff report that just be, that just included as part of the consent calendar, includes the invoices that he has submitted for services rendered and any reimbursements, receipts of materials he might have bought. I thought we talked about that last time.
Councilmember Kuzamoto, I understood that to be that you wanted a description of what those invoices were, which I have included diligently in the weekly report.
Okay, well, my expectation is it's actually part of our minutes, so we have that as, you know, memorialized, we've got it there, so there won't be any questions that come up. So if it wasn't clear last time, that's what I'd like to see. So is it possible to get those? He does submit an invoice, correct?
Yes.
And then the receipts for any materials he had to buy and get reimbursed for, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be something I think would be fairly straightforward to put into a staff report, and again, nothing extensive, just capture what we're paying for. I think it protects Mr. Underwood from any questions as to what had happened, what had transpired, and how was work authorized, how was it paid?
Understood.
Okay. Councilmember Kuzamoto, do you want to pull that item, or are you going to go ahead and make a motion to move this?
Okay, I will make a motion to move, to approve, with the understanding that we will see a staff report accounting for the $299 plus change payment and the $600 payment to Mr. Underwood.
Okay. I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Okay. Now to the good stuff. Public hearing, item 9A, zoning ordinance amendment, consideration of adding a call for review process. I'm going to go ahead and have the city manager talk about this, but this has been an item that we brought up some time ago to be able to have the opportunity from the council to pull items up from the planning commission, and with that, can I get a staff report, please?
Stevens going to deliver this report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Earlier this year, the city council passed a resolution initiating this change in the ordinance. That initiation allowed staff to draft changes to the current... That initiation allowed staff to draft changes to the current appeals process that added a secondary process called the call for review. We didn't eliminate the opportunity to appeal, we just added to it in adding a section called call for review. In that same aspect, as we were drafting it, we also took the opportunity to clean up some bad cross-referencing of the document, so you'll see two attachments in here that tries to do both in the same document. This came about, about earlier in this year because of an action of the planning commission, and we realized this was worthy of bringing back to the city council, so the city council could have the ordinance that it needs to properly enforce policy within the community. With that, I really think it's self-explanatory, the major part of this that would be to review is that the call review is by two council members. So if it's the wishes of the council to change that, tonight would be the night to do that, and you'll see that in section C of this staff report. The planning commission did support the city council of this, and recommended approval of this at the city council level. The other alternatives you can choose tonight is to do nothing, and the other alternative was to allow one council member to do it instead of the two.
Right.
And with that, if you'd like me to go into the history a little bit more, I certainly could, but I think you're all pretty familiar with this, because it initiated with you.
Okay, yeah. So we'll go ahead and keep it here, and try to keep it as short as we can, since we've lived through this a couple times. So what I'd like to do is to go ahead and give folks up here an opportunity to comment on this, then I'd, I'll open it up to a public hearing. If there's anything the public would like to add to this process, then we'll bring it back, see if we can get to the end and close this one off. Jerry, just in due respect, I would go ahead and, I'd like to open with you, if that's okay.
That's perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the staff report. I would recommend that we remain with one council member being able to bring the call for review. I think that many times, we represent different people in the community and different points of view, and for it to be limited to, you know, having to have two people supporting it, I think that that takes away from the supporters that are supporting, maybe the one that would support. That's, that's kind of confusing. Let me just put it to you this way. Everybody represents different people in this community, and every council member should have the opportunity to call for review, and I'll make it as simple as that.
Okay. Who would like to go next? Let's not all jump. If not, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public hearing here.
Let's hear the public.
Okay. Let me go ahead and open it up to the public. Anybody in the audience like to make any comments, or put, provide input on this item? Alrighty. I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing, and I'm going to bring it back. I think, I'll go ahead and start. I usually like to kind of finish off, but Jerry, just to kind of respond directly, I think that, you know, it's interesting, the call for review, we, I think we adamantly agree that needs to have, happen. I think the, the only challenge I've had is that sometimes having one person do that may be following somebody going after something that may not have the interests of the rest of the council. But, you know, to be quite honest, I would be supportive. I would be very supportive of two people doing it, but at this point, it's not something that I'm going to focus on, because I think one person gets it on doesn't assure that it's going to go anywhere. And if that person has the opportunity to bring something up to get addressed for their specific supporters, then I would think that that would be okay. Anybody else have any other comments?
I would like to.
Sure.
Actually, I am in favor of two council members. And the reason being that, as elected members to this council, we are supposed to be representing everyone in the community, not just specific sectors or certain people. We don't have, we're not in districts, we are community-wide. And one of the reasons that we had the stipulation that brought us to this point, it's been for many years, is that several years ago, any council member could bring an appeal on anything from the planning commission. And we had one council member that was bringing almost every single thing that was on the agenda of the, of the planning commission for appeal. And it was becoming very obvious that we didn't really need a planning commission, because they were being scrutinized at every turn. So I really think that if, out of five people, if two people can't agree on bringing something forward, then maybe it isn't that important to be brought forward. I would prefer to have two.
Alrighty. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Stevens.
You noticed I was looking at you.
I did.
Okay. Yeah, this, I think we've overworked this one a great deal, and it is important that each council member, without the consensus of other council members, have the opportunity that if something is concerning them, to bring it before the council. And like the mayor said, if, if it's something that's not going to go anywhere, then obviously the rest of the council is not going to go in favor of it. I see nothing wrong with one person bringing concerns back to the council, and have it, having it vetted out just a little bit farther, and again, in doing the business of the city. And so, one person's opinion on a certain item, maybe it's something that the public has to know about. And so I see nothing wrong with bringing that up.
Do you have any comments, Warren?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may just...
Please.
Just for a point of clarification, and I didn't articulate it well enough, and I don't want Marilyn or anyone else to be confused. What I meant by different people is, there are differing views of how the community should progress. Sometimes there are people who want a revitalization on Los Alamos Boulevard, sometimes there are not. So what I was saying is, is that everyone's view should be considered. And I've been in a majority, I've been in a minority, where I was the only council member, and it was a 4-1. So I do appreciate the support of allowing one council member to represent maybe a differing view of either what the planning commission is bringing, or the council will be supportive as a whole. And so, Ken and Troy, thank you very much for that. And to the, maybe it's not important enough, I think that any concern by any one of the five people who sit up here should be considered important enough, and maybe that's the problem. So I'll go ahead and pass it back to you, Mayor.
Great. Let me go ahead and entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to amend this, to say any one council member can, and move forward with it.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Sandy, just to make sure that I do this right, procedurally, is there anything you want me to add? Do I need to go through the reading on this?
We need to include in the motion that we're waiving reading in full, and then you need to read the title or have me do it.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and have you do it, please.
Sure. It is, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, to Approve Zoning Ordinance Amendment 12-02, Adopting an Ordinance Amending the Los Alamos Municipal Code Chapter 17.68 Concerning the Appeals Process Adding Call-for-Review Regulations and Correcting References to Appeals in Los Alamos Municipal Code Sections 2.52.070, 16.06.070G, 16.10.140, 16.26.040B, 17.32.050, 17.36.080D, and 17.40.020 Citywide."
Thank you. So that's the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
Okay. Next up, consideration, this is at number 9B, "Consideration of a 17-Unit Single-Family Condominium Development Including a Mitigated Negative Declaration." It's a general plan amendment and a zoning ordinance amendment. City Manager, we're going to turn that over to Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have a fairly large project, not so familiar for Los Alamos. We have a proposed housing development of 17 units in an industrial area in the city. We haven't seen that during my tenure in the city. The last one we've seen is a four-unit apartment building last year. So this, in some sense, is very exciting, and also some sense, a sign of the times. The project applicant is Olson Company. They are here tonight in the audience, they're located in Seal Beach. They've been a developer in our community before. Tonight, they propose a project in, where the intersection of Oak and Sausalito meet. It's an industrial area next to the Mobile Home Park. It has previously been a company called Harbor Patterns. It's a very large building that you might be familiar with. Here's the site, right here, this site right here, and here's some of the buildings and smaller outbuildings that are on the site. I'll blow that up for you for a second. You may be familiar with this building. A very underutilized, underdeveloped site. Its use has probably run its course, and the property owner was previously approved to build storage facilities here, self-serve warehouse, and has since decided to enter into agreement with the Olson Company to explore housing at the site. So Olson has taken the opportunity to open escrow with the property owner, hoping to obtain approvals. Again, here's the site plan of what they're proposing, 17 condos, but it'll walk and talk like detached homes. It's 17 on 1.53 acres. For discussion tonight is a mitigated negative declaration. That's the SEQA document required to be used prior to making a decision by either the planning commission, or in this case, the city council. A general plan amendment, which sets the stage for a future zoning ordinance amendment. With that, the planning commission has already served their duties in reviewing and considering the tentative track map, the conditional use permit for condominiums, and the site plan review. And we'll go over some of those accomplishments later in the presentation. In regards to the SEQA compliance, SEQA compliance is, maybe to familiarize the city council, the most recent SEQA document you've seen is the environmental impact report for the medical center. Very large, thick document. This is one level of environmental review below that. It's a mitigated negative deck. That means the project was able to mitigate the environmental impacts within itself. An initial study was prepared. It concluded that a mitigated negative deck be prepared, so initial study, then mitigated negative deck advanced to that. And then it identified the potential environmental effects of the project on the area, and provided a way to avoid or mitigate those impacts. It was able to solve the problems within itself. The function of that SEQA document is to disclose and evaluate the impacts, and inform the decision-makers, you yourself. Every board across the state of California has to have a SEQA finding prior to be, prior to making decisions. You'll see it in road improvement projects, you'll see it in construction projects. Sometimes it's exempt from SEQA, so you'll just see a little reference to it that is exempt, a small one-acre site usually wouldn't have to have that. But this is a change of zone and a change of general plan. So it's not able to skirt environmental laws. The environmental document was circulated for the mandatory requirement from September 12th through October 2nd. Some of the comments we received regarding interested parties in the compliance document or the mitigated negative deck was the Royal Oak Mobile Home Park. They came out in favor of the project, but they wanted to make sure there was someone on-site to mitigate road control during grading and demolition. They're very concerned with creeper crawl, creeping crawlers going over to their property. So the developer will be required to have an on-site mitigation expert there. The airport land use commission wanted us to make reference in our document that there was no heliport or helipad included in the project. We've done that. The Orange County Sanitation District wrote us a letter saying there's no anticipated capacity issues. And then Orange County Public Works wrote us a letter saying that there is no, they have no comment on this project. Now with every project, we're always wondering about traffic. So we did the required traffic analysis, and we realized that the underutilized site today has an average of 38 daily trips. The site, if it was used to its maximum potential as an industrial site, if it was a brand-new industrial building, would have 182 average daily trips. This project comes under that threshold of 163 average daily trips. So it would have less than the capacity at its current zoning. We never know that until we run the numbers, though. Two issues that came up during compliance, that if asbestos is found and lead-based paint is found, which could be very likely in a, in a building that is this old, that the proper abatement contractor will be incorporated on-site during demolition. And so we placed those conditions, or in this case, they're not conditions, they're actually mitigation measures that will have to be followed by the project. These are some of the things that the staff of the city are responsible for ensuring during the process through demolition permits, grading, and construction. Now, to discuss the general plan, a general plan amendment is a, is a serious thing, and we've taken it very seriously. We've looked at the current general planned land use, which is just the surface level, policy level of what the use is allowed, and that's planned industrial today. We looked at the possibility of becoming multifamily, so we looked at the properties around it. And you start looking, okay, it's next to a church, it's next to a mobile home park, and it's across the street from what we call an R3 zone, or a high residential use zone. And we realized that industrial is kind of the sore thumb. Industrial doesn't fit in anymore the way the, the community has grown around it. And so you get into considering whether it's spot zoning or not. And in this case, we came to the conclusion that it wasn't spot zoning, and that it was indeed compatible with its surrounding uses. And it also creates an extension of the existing residential mobile home park, and also the R3 zone that it's in. So it's consistent with the person to your, your neighbor to one side, your neighbor to the other side, and it's consistent with your neighbors across the street. So when we, we undertook the application, we made sure we ran the consistency findings through the entire general plan, and you'll see a large table in some of your resolutions and ordinances, that, that really recognizes the consistency of the project. Very similar is the zoning ordinance. But while the zoning ordinance doesn't just talk about whether it should be residential, it talks about how high the density should be allowed for residential. So the current plant, the current zoning, again, very similar to the conversation we just had on the other slide, the zoning is planned light industrial, it's a type of industrial. The proposed multifamily R3 residential is a type of residential. So you get down to the, more of the nitty-gritty instead of the policy level. The planning commission and staff both found that the zoning ordinance amendment is consistent with the intent of the general plan goals and policies. So this was vetted out by both staff prior to taking it to the planning commission, and then by the planning commission in considering the applications. Again, the consistency is fully demonstrated in those resolutions. You'll see a long, complicated table in both of the resolutions that recognizes these issues. Again, you'll see the site plan here. Again, we wanted to show it, showing the 17 units and how it's laid out with a private drive. The Orange County Fire Authority has reviewed this and reviewed this again to make sure they have the, the necessary turnaround for their project, for their apparatus. If they had small vans, it'd be easy to turn around, but they don't. To meet legal compliance, they have trucks full of a lot of equipment to make sure that we're all safe. So we have to make sure that we fly this through OCFA for consideration, and they have the turnaround capabilities there. We want to be able to make sure that they can serve it. This is the entryway for what is called Sausalito Walk. You'll see sidewalk, drive, and sidewalk, tree canopies. You'll see the main entrance of Sausalito Walk, and that starts the Spanish theme as you're entering this project. Now, here's the architecture that's proposed. Now, this wasn't the first architecture. I would like to say Olson got it right on the first try, but the planning commission, together with Olson, worked closely to get an architecture that better reflected some of the general plan goals of early California, and also some of our community values, to make sure that we weren't cutting the public short with the quality of the housing product that we were proposing in Los Alamos. This took two planning commission meetings. We started in the beginning of October, and the planning commission was generous enough to meet at the end of October to continue that public hearing, giving the applicant a second chance at the architecture. You'll notice now, we have Juliet balconies, deep-set windows, and larger windows. You also have coving around the garage doors and arches. You'll see a lot more architectural impacts here. I'll go into a little more detail in a few slides. Here's one plan, here's the second plan, and here's the third plan of the different housing products that will be at the site. These are all front elevations. But one of the sticky points at the beginning of the process was the lack of 360-degree ... But one of the sticky points at the beginning of the process was the lack of three-hundred-and-sixty-degree architecture. People are going to see this from the mobile home park. They're going to see it coming down Oak, and they're going to see it down Sausalito. So what can you do to upgrade the other impacts, the sides and the rear of the property, to get a good product that looks good in Los Alamos for the next fifty years instead of just today? What the Planning Commission and the applicant so generously worked towards was, this is the rear elevation of one of the larger projects. Now you see a twelve-inch recess at the windows. You see a twelve-inch canilever that comes out with corbels under it. You'll see shutters with accent colors, exposed wood, rafter ties now, and you'll see more details and more features in this. Same with this one. You'll see the gable, the shutters, the decorative lights on the rear of the properties, not just the front. So what they're doing is they're adding makeup to the rest of the building to make the building look good all the way around. And I have to compliment the Olson Company for recognizing the seriousness of the Planning Commission's direction on this. You'll see the larger window cutouts now, decorative lights, iron pot shelves. As far as public communications regarding this project, this project has been noticed twice in the news enterprise, both to meet legal requirements. We've placed a notice of public hearing on September 12th and November 7th. We've mailed the property owners and business tenants within five hundred feet, and we've done that twice, as required by law, both before the Planning Commission meets and the City Council meets. We've had consultation with Native American tribes, as required by now law as well now. It's called SB 18, was approved in 2005, I think I got that right. SB 18 now requires you to mail any general plan amendments or specific plans to the tribes, giving them ninety days to request consultation. In this case, they responded, but they didn't request consultation. They wanted to make sure onsite monitoring was conducted on the site at grading and demolition. So the developer will be required for employing or hiring or contracting out with a Native American specialist. This resulted, again, in the onsite monitoring during grading. The applicant has held two of their own meetings at Cottonwood Christian Church. They held those in June and in August. They wanted to get some early feedback from the public in case some of the neighbors were concerned. They wanted to make sure they did their own due diligence, which is much appreciated. And then again, the public hearings that have been held, there's been three public hearings regarding this project. Public hearings have been held on October 8th, October 29th, and then again tonight on November 19th. Now fiscal impact, we always wonder what's the loss or what's the gain of changing land use. In this case, property tax revenues from the industrial use to this particular residential use will increase five-hundred-and-twenty-seven percent. You'll see in your staff report, you actually have the dollar amount. And then it'll also generate in lieu park fees. In this case, it's eighteen thousand dollars per unit, times seventeen is three-hundred-and-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand dollars. That they'll be writing those, those checks will be written at the issuance of each building permit. If they take three houses out, they'll pay this times three each time. If they do all of them at once, that check will come in at once. That's monitored at the building counter. It's a condition of approval. They can't have a building permit issue unless it's paid. If approved tonight, the second reading would be held at your next regular meeting on December 17th, and then later, probably early in 2013 or even earlier than that, they'll apply for what is called a final map. The Planning Commission approved the tentative map. The City Council will have review and consideration of the final map, much like that business condominium map that we did a couple of years ago. Remember, we had that special hearing, so he can meet his lending criteria. This will be like that. It'll be done probably in January or February is when they'll apply, and we'll get that through to the City Council at that time, after the city engineer makes sure that they met all the conditions imposed on the map. With that, I'd like to make some introductions in the audience. You're probably wondering who the suits are. We have John Reekston from the Olson Company. John, could you raise your hand? Eric Everhart with the Olson Company. Denise Ashton, she's with the architecture firm. Peter Duarte is the landscape architect, in case there's any questions regarding architect. And our planning team is Mr. Jose Rodriguez from Hoagland Ireland, and Mr. Tom Oliver, who's to my left. They have been the planning team that have worked on this so diligently and gotten this through fairly swiftly, I may add. It's been an enjoyable process, but now our process is done. We turn it over to the City Council. With that, we would recommend that the Council open the public hearing, hear from the applicant, give them a chance to tell you about their company and their project, take public testimony, and if appropriate, open the public hearing, and then take action on the mitigated negative deck, the general plan amendment, and the zoning ordinance amendment. Staff will be here if you have any questions. And with that, I'm going to walk over to the computer and pull their presentation up.
Great. While he's doing that, what Stephen's recommending is that we're going to go ahead and just let them go in. Anybody on the Council have any questions before we get them up?
I do have one.
Sure, go ahead.
Stephen, you were talking about the permits. Is there a separate permit for each of the seventeen homes or just a permit for the entire project?
No, each building permit will be done individually, so they'll have an address file, just like you have an address file for your home, and it'll be used for the next fifty to sixty years for anyone interested in buying that property.
Okay.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor. So Stephen, on the car trips, I guess the budgeted permitted use was one-hundred-and-eighty-something car trips, and it wasn't being used in that fashion because it was almost vacant.
Correct.
Now, if it were turned into a storage unit, how many car trips would that have been? Would it have been under the one-hundred-and-eighty?
It would have been even under the one-hundred-and-sixty-three.
Okay.
But it would have been higher at weekends than this would have been.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the question I had was the eighteen thousand dollars per unit for the one-time park impact fee seems pretty exorbitant. Can you remind me again how we calculate that?
That is done through a fee study that was adopted in, I want to say, 2000. It was done under the purview of the City Council. A consultant had done that. It's in lieu of creating parks. Since they don't have a park project, it's developed through a law called the Quimby Act, and there are different rates for different projects. A condominium, attached condominium that's multifamily, would have a lower rate than this project would. So it's basically to mitigate the impacts on our park system by these new residents that will occupy these homes.
Okay, so we have special funds set up in the budget. This is one that specifically gets funded today. Do we have any idea what the balance is in our park fund that gets funded? Because this money has to be earmarked for parks only.
Mr. Mayor, we just spent about two-hundred thousand on Laurel Park, and I can't quite remember how. I think, Dave, isn't that fund almost depleted now?
I believe we have somewhere less than ten thousand dollars left in the budget.
Okay, well, I'm just going to put it out there. It just seems very exorbitant to me. It seems like if I was building condos here, to spend eighteen thousand dollars to, before I even set up to start building, to pull a permit, I guess I, you know, obviously, since I've been on the Council, I haven't seen new development like that. But it's in the back of my mind, and I don't know if any of the other Council members have any interest in talking about it. But let's go ahead and have Olson Company come on up.
Thank you very much, Mayor Edgar and Council members. My name is John Reekston with the Olson Company. We are very excited about the potential of building another community in the city of Los Alamos. It's been many years since we have. We're located immediately adjacent to the city, and we've always enjoyed building in the city of Los Alamos. You've been tremendous partners over the years. It's a wonderful community. Many, many of our employees live in Los Alamos, so it holds a special affinity for all of us. And let me start out by saying that your staff has been excellent, and you have a top-notch staff here. They've done a great job. The Planning Commission absolutely did their job. What we find is when we go through this process with staff and the Planning Commission, we always come out with a better project, and we really feel that that's what we're proposing here this evening. Olson has been in existence for twenty-four years. We've built over one-hundred-and-thirty communities throughout the state of California. Give you a little background on the company. You've already met the management team. Eric Everhart is going to be coming up in just a couple of minutes. He's our project manager, and will be handling the day-to-day operations as we continue to move forward through the process for the Olson Company. We recently received an award from Alliant. Alliant is the leading company which surveys customer service throughout the nation for home builders. The Olson Company was number one in customer service in the United States last year. Our overall customer satisfaction rating was ninety-nine percent. We are very proud of that achievement. One of the things the Olson Company does with every one of its communities is we have an individual staff member who attends every quarterly board meetings for every one of our communities, ever since we started back in 1988, to help the associations with their long-term maintenance, making sure that they're spending their money appropriately, identifying maintenance issues, advising the homeowners' associations, and serving as a liaison with the city to tackle any issues before they become problems. And that's why if you visit an Olson community, you'll see that they're in great shape. They look very nice, and they're first class. And so we're very proud of that and intend to continue to hold this ranking into the future and into the coming years, and definitely in this project. We were also voted the home builder of the year in 2003 by Builder Magazine, which is another prestigious award we like to talk about once in a while. We did hold two community meetings, predominantly attended by the Royal Oaks Mobile Home Park. And as a result, the association wrote a letter of support for this project. They've been wonderful neighbors throughout the process, and we look forward to that continued partnership into the future. And with that, Steve did such a great job presenting this community. You're going to see repetition in slides, but we're not going to take you through the same presentation. I know Eric will probably mostly focus on schedule, because I know you're going to want to know if you are inclined to support this community, what the schedule is going to be, and when you might see brand-new homes built. So with that, Eric, if you'd come up.
Thank you very much, City Council. It's with great respect and honor that we're here today, and we're very thankful for the opportunity to be able to come back to Los Alamos and really supply to you a community that, for the next fifty years, you can be proud of. This site, as we've already discussed, is 1.53 acres, and it was the home of Harbor Patterns, a manufacturer and a fabricator. The buildings were built in the 1950s and 1960s and are all since vacant. Should we be approved tonight, prior to demolition, as discussed earlier, the Olson Company will ensure that the rodent or vector issues that are out there now, that those will be eradicated, and that any asbestos and lead-based paint that has been identified will be safely removed from the site by licensed and certified professionals. Again, in working closely and collaboratively with a very dedicated city staff and also the Planning Commission, this is the location that the Olson Company wishes to bring a new and vibrant community to Los Alamos. An attractive site plan incorporates, as discussed, seventeen single-family homes. Square footage will range from seventeen zero seven square foot for a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, to nineteen fourteen square feet for a four-bedroom, three-bath. Each home will have its own private yard and traditional two-car side-by-side garage. A beautiful community pocket park, you know, I always have a spare laser here. A beautiful community pocket park will serve the community. It'll serve an area for children to have birthday celebrations, or it can serve as a quiet place to sit, read, and reflect the day. Beautiful trees, including Chinese elms and crepe myrtles, line the street to create a colorful canopy of welcome for each home. Street trees, as well as the front yards, will be professionally maintained by a homeowners' association. As John mentioned before, each of the projects that we do, we set up very carefully a homeowners' association, and we actually work closely with them to train them on how to run an association. The three keys of a successful HOA is to protect, maintain, and enhance. So we work closely with those individuals to get there. The Olson Company will go up to ten years to HOAs at no charge to them to serve as an advisor. I happen to be one of the lucky trained people, and I really do enjoy doing it, because it gives me the opportunity to stay in close contact with the community. I also make friends that sit on the board, so it works really well. You know, I'm the first to find out if there's issues. I serve as their advocate between them and the Olson Company, and it works really well. I really don't know of any other home builder that does that. So it's a great thing that the Olson Company does. Again, just to show you a little bit about the entrance, the entrance will be what we feel is inspiring. It's offset with beautiful crepe myrtles and lush, balanced shrubbery and ground cover. We have what will be an iconic olive tree and uplighted community monumentation that will signal to all that one has arrived to this community. Every aspect, we've worked hard on to ensure that the entrance will be designed to attractively catch and be pleasing to the eye. This is our plan, too. It's the largest plan. It's the nineteen fourteen square feet with four bedrooms and three baths. As you'll be able to see on the next slide, and I won't go into all the detail because it's already been done, we worked very hard with city staff, worked collaboratively, to come up with a really excellent display from a street scene-wise, and we're very pleased with the outcome. Again, it's three-hundred-and-sixty degrees, so it looks all the way around, and we've worked, again, really hard so that you can, even people that are driving by or from Cottonwood or the main street or Royal Oaks have something that looks great. Again, this is our plan, this is our Plan 1A. It's a smaller plan, but it is seventeen zero seven square feet. It's three bedrooms, two-and-a-half baths. As you'll see on the next slide, it's the same thing. Attention to detail, 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 and we find that so very important. Again, detail from the rear. This is our Plan 1C. It shares the same square footage, seventeen zero seven square feet, slightly different, but again, same attention to detail. Everybody always wants to know schedules, you know, how things are going to fit together. This is no different. If we're approved tonight, we will continue to move forward. We believe that we'll be able to get the rodent and pest eradication done in January, and we'll begin demo sometime in early February. We'll work towards a model opening sometime in early May, and we expect our first closings to come sometime early, late July, early June, or July, August, early August, sorry. Again, with great respect, the Olson Company hereby submits this to City Council. I've got a very, very talented team that are here to support and answer any questions that City Council may have. Again, I want to extend my thank you to the city staff, extremely hardworking, working collaboratively with this group. It's worked out best. We brought the best to the table, and we thank you very much.
Any other comments from anybody else at the Olson Company or the team? What I'm going to go ahead and do is I'm going to just continue the public hearing portion of this. I'm going to ask if anybody in the audience would like to make comments on this project before I bring it back to the City Council and talk about this further. Okay, at this point, I don't see any public hearing. Jury said that you want to take a break before we...
Just really quickly.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. So I think we're going to come back now into session, back from break, and let's pick up where we left off. We had come back from public hearing. We had a stampede of people that had a lot of comments, but actually none, so we're going to bring it back to the Council and see what comments we have from the City Council. I'm going to try and get this thing to a vote fairly... I'm going to try and get this thing to a vote fairly quickly. So, let me go ahead and open up. Anybody have any further comments on this project?
I'm good. I just want to say, thank you so much for coming, and I think your project is absolutely beautiful, and it's going to be really well-received by the community. Did a little bit of research on you, and you are very well-respected and highly thought of, and so that's a good thing for us, who are having to help make the decision. Makes it a little easier. I know that the previous owner had tried to develop the property and hadn't always been successful, and then when he did get the okay, it worked out that maybe it was a better deal to go with you. So, I'm glad to see him coming out on the other end of it, successful also. The residents, I'm glad to see that the Royal Oaks was taken into consideration. I know in the past, when those other projects had been brought forward, they were a little concerned, maybe about noise and such, and I don't think that they'll have that with you there in another residential area. And the steps that you've taken to protect them throughout this process with the mitigation issues, I just wanted to applaud you and say thank you so much, because it seems like you're going above and beyond to do what's necessary. Even though it may be an impact to you, I have to say, I'm so pleased to see the park fees, because I do remember that our account had been depleted, and in times where we're having to cut the budget many times, that's not something that we have a lot of money for, and our parks do need some dressing up, so that will be great to get that income from you. I just hope that the cost, that impact of that park fee, is not substantial in the overall cost of, or, you know, value that you'll have for your property, and I wouldn't imagine that it would, because I'm sure that they're going to be relatively expensive. I also wanted to say, so wise of you to stay involved with the HOAs for about 10 years after. I think that assures success, gets people up and running, and then the process is just something that they carry on, and I think that was another good item that you brought And I just wanted to say, depending on what happens tonight, I don't think these will last very long on the market. I mean, just from the drawings even, I just wish I had enough to buy one, but anyways, I'll go ahead and pass it back to you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Ken?
All right. Couple of quick things, maybe two or three. Olson and Company, I wanted to thank you for investing in our community, and I particularly want to thank you for investing into our residents by taking the time to have the different meetings with the residents of the Royal Oaks Mobile Park, to let them know and to take away any fears that they might have, and to address any issues that they had. So, again, thank you for doing that, and thank you to staff, too, for running as hard as you did on this and doing all the work. I have never received a packet so big in my life on background documents, and oddly enough, we do try to take the time to go through them in detail. We sacrifice food and our livelihood, I think, by doing it in some cases, but it was very informative, very well-thought-out, and looking forward to your company making other investments in our residents and in our community, too. But I do have a couple of other questions, and one of the ones that I was at a meeting of the residents of Royal Oaks, and it was refreshing for me to hear that their only concern was during and after construction, the parking on Sausalito, right where it bends there. And so, will there be the residents parking cars out there on Sausalito, or is there going to be some sort of control during the construction process, just to make sure that it's a safe turn for the average car going around there? And I guess, Stephen, would you have the answer on that, or is it a little premature?
No, it's not premature, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment. Most of onsite construction will be mitigated onsite. The only time it'll kind of veer off of that is the improvements to the sidewalks and the driveway aprons. That's where you're going to see half a lane closed, but the rest of it will be onsite, dust control, noise, all of those mitigation measures will be incorporated onsite for the grading. Their offices will be onsite, their sales offices will be onsite later on. Prior to that, their construction trailers will be onsite. Everything will be onsite. The only time they will really impact the neighborhood is about half of a lane closure at construction, again, of sidewalks and driveway aprons.
Okay, thank you. Another thing, too, that I guess I personally want to address is, and it's premature, I know this, but it's a responsibility that the city has. We went through the Fire Authority with a great deal of the inspections and what is going to be necessary, but when it comes down to fire hydrant location, the pressure and the auxiliary units within the complex, that's something that hasn't had a chance to be addressed yet at all with our city planning department, as well as the Fire Authority, as to what the needs are going to be, because they actually leave it up to us to make sure that we have the right coverage. And again, when you're dealing with a development like this, you're not going to have a huge water truck that's going to be able to enter into that facility, so...
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember. You've already had a very intricate level of review for the entire site based on truck turnaround. Now, if they're so lucky to be approved by the City Council, they will be required, prior to issuing building permits, to submit a fire master plan. It's condition number 57 in the conditions. They will be submitting a fire master plan to the fire chief for review and approval, and that fire master plan will include emergency access, fire hydrant location, and fire lane markings. So, that's the next level. And then, prior to occupancy, the fire chief will also ensure that all of those things are met. So, there's two more levels of review that the Fire Authority will have on this project.
Good, good. Thank you. That answers that question, because we are a built-out city. It is aging, and a lot of the requirements we had for fire hydrants are so old that they don't even meet the needs that we have right now, and especially with the smaller units, you know, that are coming out. I mean, we've got some areas in the city where the Fire Department actually has to string lines to be able to handle a situation, and I know, and I hope, that the next councils over the next 10 years will address this on every development that we get into, just again, public safety more than anything. It's one thing to have them respond, it's another thing to give them the tools to respond adequately on it. And I know this isn't uncharted water for the Olson and Company. I know you've been through this before, and I guarantee that public safety is also very paramount on your minds, too. So, thank you for that. You know what? Outside of just flat, thank you. That's all I've got.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Chris Mondo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I want to thank the Olson Company and staff for this very thorough report, and it was quite lengthy. Stephen, I had a question on, I agree with Mayor Edgar on the fees that park, so can you explain a little bit more? Because it seems to me that if they don't pay the fee, then they really have to reserve some land and create park space? Is that how that kind of works?
Yeah. The Quimby Act was predicated on keeping the balance of residential to acreage. Now, in order to keep that balance, you can't always go and buy land, but what you can do is supplement the city's ability to provide park services. Many cities have other impact fees, a fire impact fee, police impact fee, library, there's even some cities I've seen a gymnasium fee. Although it may seem prohibitive, we don't have the other categories in our city that would prohibit a developer from this to come to our city.
Right, but I guess one way to avoid the fee is create park space, then?
Correct.
And then, that has a cost, and then, there's a cost to the city in terms of the maintenance recurring and any of that stuff that happens over time, right?
Well, programming of a park and maintenance of a park cannot be used, Quimby cannot be used for that.
I understand, but again, I'm just saying there's a cost, right?
Yeah, there is.
A long-term cost.
And that cost in an urban area is much more expensive than the inland empire.
Okay. And the other part, the pocket park that's been identified here, I imagine that's going to be covered by the HOA fees and the maintenance and upkeep and that. Is there just a ballpark of that would be? How much would that run, in your experience?
For the park, you're probably talking about $30 per home.
Overall HOA fee, how much for the...
The overall HOA fees will be around $200, maybe less.
Okay. And then, for our city, are there any other HOAs that actually pay fees?
Yeah, there's a large one on Farquhar, and a few smaller ones along Green and Howard.
Okay, that was it. Thank you again for doing this for our city.
Great, thank you. Marilyn?
Thank you. I know that this was a lot of hard work, and I didn't have to worry about the Olson Company, because our family had experience in the 90s with the Olson family and the project over on Spring Street. So, I knew that it was going to be a good project. And as many people in the community know, as council members, we get the minutes and agenda for each Planning Commission meeting. So, I've been following this through the meetings and the progress that you have made, and I, like everyone else, want to thank you for working with the staff to come up with enhanced product from what was first presented. I also had concern about the Royal Oak residents. I know several of them, and they have talked to me about the different things that were going on in the neighborhood, and I knew that they were not real happy with the idea of a storage facility there, and so, they have expressed personally to me that they're really much happier with this. It does, it does fit within, I did have some concerns about our general plan, and as Stephen has said, it does fit very well within the general plan to make the adjustment because of the neighborhood, the surrounding area. It really does lend itself to this type of a project. I had some issues and had called today and talked to Stephen and Tom regarding our local sewer district, and I know that you have been in contact with them and are going to follow up with that to make sure that that line is below the 66 percent that is required. So, with that, I think, you know, you've covered all the areas, and this is going to be a lovely addition to our community, and especially, I don't know whether you all know this, but we have kind of names for the different neighborhoods, and this is Old Town West, and I think that the residents there are going to be real happy that their neighborhood has been kind of upgraded and will look a lot nicer than it does now. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and echo everybody's sentiment. I'm not going to, I'll take your advice, and I won't repeat everything that you've heard earlier, but, you know, the numbers come to mind right away, 527 percent more revenue for the city than in its current zoning condition, and probably my biggest concern was the zoning congruence, really switching anything at this point. People that follow the council know I like to stay on a process. We're in the middle of a general plan update, so I was really excited to see this project, like Marilyn. We kind of watch it work its way through the process. Couple things, I'm very interested when I see a project like this, and I haven't seen something like this, but a complex one, the only thing I could compare this to was watching the hospital project go through, and it seemed like a lot of the same players, staff and contractors, but it was interesting to me to see the amount of input that the commission had, too, and I will kind of add on top of that, I think that the Planning Commission saved us a lot of work up here. They definitely got involved, met multiple times, and this was not a project that was jammed through. The other thing is that I think that you guys were very accommodating, you know, the part, for me, even behind this facility, I spent a lot of time on that trail and the river, you know, running and doing a bunch of stuff down there, so it's always been kind of an eyesore. The church kind of stepped it up, and the people that live in Royal Oaks there, they do stuff for the units in the back. That's always been kind of a tough one. You could kind of tell when you're coming over the bridge, it's a gateway, and I think this will be a very positive imprint when people start driving into our community and they get to see that, and I was very appreciative of the back of the houses and the cantilevers and all the added features and the colored shutters, all that, that I think will add something as you come into our city from Long Beach through the gateway there. The other, I guess, you know, the conformity with the general plan, I think that this sets an example. You know, what's funny is that that street has two names. If you go just right across the street, it's a different name, but very similar to what Marilyn's saying, a lot of history in Old Town West, and I think that, you know, you guys are the perfect company to come in and to put an impression on that part of town and to take it all the way through. You know, our most historic district is Old Town West, and it has some of the oldest houses we have now paired up with some of your stuff, so, again, very thankful. To city staff, a lot of people in the community, you know, will get up here and go, God, city staff did a great job, and people go, you paid them to do that, so don't, you know. But I'm going to say it every time, I think we need to be very appreciative. You know, this is not a project that, you know, as Ken had said, you know, if we, you know, judging stuff by the pound, we would be giving this a great assessment, but actually, going in through the detail, there was a lot of hard work that went into this, and the city staff are a group that we pretty much have contracting by the hour. We've outsourced most of our city planning work so that we only pay as a city as we go, and, you know, and you guys pick up a lot of the cost. Stephen, I think you and your department and the contracting group that you guys brought through this did a great job, and again, it just continues the great job that you guys did from the hospital to this project. So, again, good job. I think those are the only comments without being even more repetitive than that, so I'm going to go ahead and look for a motion on this project.
I would like to make a motion to approve the recommended action.
Second.
Okay. Sandy, and I'm going to ask you again, it's not because I'm being lazy. There's a lot to read here, and I just want to make sure it's done right.
Happily. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos adopting zoning ordinance amendment 12-01 to change zoning designations from planned light industrial to multiple-family residential are three for the construction of 17 single-family residential condominiums for a project located at 3271 Sausalito Street, APN 242-222-01. Just in case anybody in the audience is wondering why we go through that silly routine of reading it, state law and the municipal both require that we read the title of the ordinance when you approve it.
Okay. So, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose or abstain? None? Okay. I think, congratulations.
Did you have opposed or abstained?
What's that?
Did you say you...
No, I asked if anybody opposed or abstained. No one did. Now, we're going to move into council comments and move into closed session. Who would like to go first in the council comments?
I'll go first, very quickly.
Sure.
City manager, I'd like to see if we couldn't do some research on the Wi-Fi recommendation that was made earlier. I know that it's been mentioned by other residents, and I know we had talked about those when we were going over the whole L.A.T.V. revamping, so it would be great if we could see that on a future agenda, not too far out from now. City manager, have we done anything about the signs at 70 to make people aware that there is access to the 24-hour fitness center there through a left turn on 70 into what looks to be the racetrack?
I don't think we've done anything to date. Right, Dave?
No, we have not gotten to that yet. It's on our list of things to do.
Great, that's all I needed. Any expectation of time of where we might? I mean, a sign seems minuscule compared to some of the things you guys have to address.
It's true. It should only take like a week or two to get the sign in and be installed.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to say, congratulations to the Public Works Department. The speed bumps have started to go in, and I think they're meeting with really good results for the people who live along those alleys. There has been a little bit of a glitch. They don't really adhere well to the asphalt alleys, so Public Works is looking into an alternative, and look forward to hearing that. Wanted to report my attendance at Vector. Don't need to do a lot of reporting out, because we had them come and speak earlier tonight and give a presentation. And I think that's all I have.
All right, great. Who'd like to go next?
I'll go, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I want to just congratulate those at one of their elections, the recent elections. I also want to thank Southern California Gas Company, who hosted a reception for the elected and leaders of the chambers. I was over at the Discovery Science Center, and we had a chance to mingle and then go and see their new Indiana and then go and see the new, their new Indiana Jones archaeology display, which was quite interactive. And it was a very interesting display. A lot of the movie props, but a lot of history and the facts behind those. I attended a portion of the city select committee with the Association of California Cities OC. Mayor Pro Tempe was there doing our vote, casting our votes for the different city select committees. And I was able to sit in on the other, I guess, more dry part on the business of the AAOC, but the ACC OC. But I guess a question that I have, that I'd like to see agendized sometime in the future is, what is the value of us being a member of that as well as League of Cities? So, no pressing matter, Angie, but something if we can have on the agenda maybe when we start doing the mid-year budgeting and see what is our, what are we gaining out of that for being a member of both? And let's see. Again, I'm going to remind, you know, as Mayor Edgar said about small business, Saturday's coming up, so let's please get out there and support our small businesses, our, our local merchants. The, oh, the other thing I'd want to mention, I guess, if it's appropriate, I'm going to look at Angie, if I speak too far on this, this being nominated, the city being nominated for that award, the Orange County Business Council? So, can you explain that?
Yeah, I'll let Stephen explain it because it, it, it's a great thing. And the award application was initiated and written by our planning aide, Tom Oliver. So, we're excited about it. And Stephen, add, add some info to it, please.
The Orange County Business Council has an, this is their second annual awards for removing red tape and turning red tape into red carpet. We had the opportunity this year of looking at the application and kind of a light bulb went off on Tom right here about our new program that we adopted this year, the Business and Residential Improvement Program. It's the rebate program that rebated monies to our businesses and homeowners that are rehabilitating or improving their properties. As you may remember, it was a unanimous, unanimous vote by the city council. And now you have an award for the city council to share in. The award ceremony will be on the 29th, Thursday after Thanksgiving. And we're ready to take your RSVPs if you're, if you're interested in attending.
So, it's actually the award, I thought we were just nominees, the city?
No, you're getting an award.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Oh, nice for that. Okay, but thank you for that. And then lastly, just wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving, a very safe, happy Thanksgiving. Back to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn?
Uh-huh, thank you. Okay, on November 8th, along with our city manager Angie, attended Westcom. The subject was employee labor negotiations, and that is continuing. On Thursday, November 13th, along with council member Jerry Mejia and our city manager Angie Avery, we attended the Los Alamos School Board Meeting at 6:30 and gave a really, really big check for $300,000 for the rehab of the Oak Gym and for the community bathrooms. And they were very appreciative. And I'd like to thank the council for considering this and, and moving forward on it. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us to, we had that opportunity 50 years ago when we partnered with then the Anaheim break, which was over our high school and, and junior highs. And the county, the city, and the youth center. And that's how the gym was built. So, you know, after 50 years, it, it needs a lot of help. And so, the school district is going with the modification of Oak, starting in the new year, as they have done with all of the schools. And they do a wonderful job. And they had gone, submitted all the plans, and it, this is the time for us to do this. And so, it was fun for us to be able to go there. And this is an investment from our community into the future for the children and adults that use the gym and the bathrooms for the community. That was something that was the idea of the school district. And if you've ever been out there during soccer at Oakfield Soccer, Friday Night Lights, so on and so forth, that field gets used so much and the porta-potties are not nice. So, this is going to be very, very nice. It, we still will have to have a couple of porta-potties out there, but there will be some nice bathrooms. And so, really grateful that the school district thought about that. So, that was a lot of fun. And as council member Kuzamoto mentioned, I went for our mayor Thursday night, November the, oh, it wasn't the 15th, it was last Thursday night, to the city selection meeting. And this is held once a year. And members of, of Orange County cities belong to this. And it's an opportunity for us to vote for people from the different city councils in Orange County to be on specific regional boards. And this was very important. The main thing this, for this was seats on OCTA, the Orange County Transportation Authority. If you've been following the council meetings, you know that we have been, our mayor has been involved. I have gone to some of the meetings for him in writing letters to OCTA along with a lot of the cities, Cypress, Seal Beach, Garden Grove, now Huntington Beach, saying how we do not want toll roads on the 405. And the makeup of the OCTA board is very crucial in that respect. So, we are very fortunate to have had Gary Miller from Seal Beach and Matt Harper from Huntington Beach elected to the OCTA board. And they will support the wishes of our community, of this council. And so, that is one, one reason why it's important for us to be part of that organization so that we have representation in the region. We're, we, we are a little city, but it's important that we are able to go and vote, and we do make a difference in what happens in Orange County. I would like to thank the residents for voting in favor of Measure DD. I think it's important for our city. It was not a new tax, and I'm thankful that it was voted on. I'd like to ask if there has been any phone calls recently from residents of the Rossmore Highlands regarding problems with cellphone reception? I've had quite a few complaints from residents in the Highlands, and they have a website where a lot of them have gone on their own website. And my recommendation to them was that they contact the city. It's mostly with Verizon. And there seems to be an abundance of people in the Highlands that have very, very poor cellphone reception. A couple of them have turned, have tried several different, told me that they've tried several different phones. That's expensive, and they just don't have good reception at all. So, if we could have staff look into that, I'd appreciate it. I would like to congratulate Dean Gross and Richard Murphy on the election. I know you'll do a fine job. And I'd like to also, earlier this evening in public comment, there was comments made that the city gives public funds to the nonprofits. Well, I am associated with a lot of nonprofits in this community, and I can assure all of you that the city does not give public funds to nonprofits. I would not be in favor of that. I would never vote for that. And I, I don't know how that idea has been misconstrued. And lastly, let's see, I think I've taken care of just about everything. I want to say happy birthday to my granddaughter Maddie. Today is her birthday, and she's 13. It's kind of interesting to me. I have three grandchildren, and they were all born while I was seated on this council. And it doesn't seem like it's been that long, but it has. Anyway, happy birthday, Maddie.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
I also want to wish Maddie a happy birthday. And yesterday was my birthday, and I'm not 13.
Oh, happy birthday.
So, they're really piling up on me now. Councilmember Mejia, also, she wanted to speak to this, and so do I. This is something where you have the opportunity to cast a vote on the Give Back Program that we have within our city. You should have received one of these in the mail. And it came as a stuffer inside our, I believe, our Parks and Recreation flyer, right there. And so, please take it out. You have till January 15th to be able to get this back to our city hall. And please do it. Take the time to pick, to pick out what you would like to see the city go into as far as the Give Back Program. Pick out what you, you know is going to benefit the city and your family too, as residents. I mean, there's so many different things on here, and I'm not going to go through all of them. But please take the time to be proactive in your city by making sure that we get this back to our city by January 15th. And if you've lost your copy, call City Hall. They'll get another one for you right away. All right, in the last few weeks, couple of weeks, I've been to OCFA three different times. Budget and Finance in the middle of the afternoon. Again, another extensive, long-lasting meeting. Like most cities, the OCFA is also concerned about how the money is being spent and how frugal we can be whenever we're doing it. And so, after I believe it is three years on the Budget and Finance Committee, you sort of understand the direction that we have to go to keep things affordable for all of the, the member cities. We also had a regular meeting, and part of the regular meeting was to discuss some, some possible reductions in staffing at OC, I'm sorry, at John Wayne Airport. And the feasibility studies behind that, that is something that is still being discussed at the county supervisor level and will come back. I just am never a supporter of compromising on any, any public service in any way when it comes down to that. We also had a special meeting, and the special meetings are, are involved in the inspection programs. And that's something that's still ongoing and will be coming up in December and January. And so, there's, there's quite a few things out there within these other organizations that have to be monitored at a city level. We have to make our opinions be known and judge things accordingly as to the information that's given to us. Outside of those three long meetings, I just wanted to, to wish everybody, number one, a happy Thanksgiving. And take the time to reach out to your community, to people in the community that are less fortunate. I know it's, there, there are quite a few different areas in the community where they will be giving out food to people less fortunate. That's something that I believe in. No family should ever do without, especially this time of year. And we all have a great deal to be thankful for. And if we're not sharing it with our neighbors, to me, that's a sin. And so, reach out to your neighbors. Make sure that they have what they need to enjoy the Thanksgiving. Make sure that they have the time to be able to do it. And if you get a second, stop by City Hall, stop by the fire department, station number two. Thank the people that are in uniform that are working that day, that are helping us enjoy our Thanksgiving. And then if you see one of our brave people in uniform walking around the community, buy them a cup of coffee. Because they're also helping us right now. It's a tough time for everybody that's in uniform. It's a tough time for families. So, reach out. Reach out to everyone you can and make it a wonderful Thanksgiving, not only for our city, not only for the families in our city, but our community too. And so, that would be my, my Thanksgiving wish for all of you, because I'm going to. And I also wanted to congratulate the two new, soon-to-be-new city council members up here. And I think at our next meeting, I'll be able to give you a, a better congratulations. But I thank you for getting out in the community. Let your views be known. Knocking on doors, telling people what you're going to do. And I, like all the other residents in the community, I'm going to hold your feet to the fire, to the liver. So, know it's coming. And I also know that you can very well do it. And you're going to be excellent, excellent stewards of the city and doing the business of the city. Don't take your lessons on what's happening from Washington DC. That's politics at its absolute worst. This is public service in our city. Thank you both.
Great, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and start where he left off, and then I'm going to go into a little bit more of mine. You know, I, I want to also congratulate Dean and Richard on your victory. I also want to congratulate you, Ken, on just a, a great campaign and getting out there and really working and talking to the community. And you're such a gracious man. So, again, thank you for everything that you do too. You know, obviously, I've got a State of the City dress coming up next Tuesday. And I've got some very interesting and very exciting message that I wanted to share with the community. And I just ask everybody, if you get an opportunity, it's going to be at the Eagles Nest, 11:30 on Tuesday next week. And, you know, this last year, for, for me personally, for my life, having a tremendous opportunity to run for State Assembly, I really got an opportunity to see a lot of our neighbor cities up close. I got to build relationships over the last year with all council members, with all mayors. I got to walk their communities. A lot of the times, they walked them with me. And, you know, when you get out there and get to talking to all the folks and you get to see how good we have it in our city as compared to all those other cities. They have it good too, but it's a lot different. You know, I, I was out walking with Tree Tom, who's the newly-elected mayor for the city of Westminster. And going door to door, and we get to a door there, and, and the lady opens the door, and she goes, "What are you guys going to do? You guys, you know, redevelopment. You laid off 66 people. You know, you, you know, what about your oversight committee? You guys got rid of it. Don't you want input from the community?" And, you know, he's sitting there and he's trying to figure out how to talk through that issue, pretty significant. You know, and, you know, we'd go to another door, and it was all about financials. And "What are you guys going to do? And, you know, are you going to be focused on public safety?" And, you know, one of the responses that he gave at a door was, "Well, we're, we put in a new travel, you know, RV place in our community, and that'll generate a lot of point-of-sale." And the person at the door saying, "No, those gimmicks were used in the last mayor. What are you going to do?" And, you know, as we're walking for four or five hours through Westminster, you know, walking the precincts and talking, and I, you know, said, "Hey, you know, I, I think they just want to have an oversight committee and be heard. And you're going to have to do something like that to, to bring that into the community and to make those hard decisions so that you don't own them all by yourself." And, and he, you know, he was such a gracious guy. And the only reason I'm telling that story is that I've got more stories like that to tell at the State of the City. But what I learned is that if you look at the health of our city financially, that we've built up an 80% reserve, that we're talking about, you know, a give back to, from reserves because we've built up, you know, we have relationships with our union and our nonrepresented employees, you know. And in the one thing that, you know, I always said, and Jerry kind of gives me a hard time about, but I always say, you know, you, you focus on, you know, cutting things, not people. And, you know, so the challenge is, you know, the community really need, we need your input on the potential give back for the reserves. But we, you know, we also got to search within ourselves to make sure that we take care of the staff that took five years of pay cuts, that, that the unions that, you know, had to go and furlough and do a lot of the stuff. You know, it's, there's going to come a time when you can't talk out of both sides of your mouth. And, and, and again, a little bit of the challenge for our, our council and going forward for the year. And I'm bringing it up just because, you know, this is the feel-good stuff. Is that, you know, we've also got to figure out how to be able to, you know, right-size the city, figure out what we're doing. And I really, like I said, over the last year, to hear the problems and the challenges of all of these other cities and to see what we're doing, we're really dealing with a totally different issue than most of the- totally different issue than most of these cities and it was a great experience. I had an opportunity to meet with the Orange County Council of Governments Chairman, who is Leroy Mills, from City Council Member, previous mayor from Cypress. I wanted to report to the city council members that there was two things he asked me to pass on. One is that they need, they need people to be involved on the committees, the transportation, the, you know, I think Jerry, you've been a part of OCOG before, I know you were with SCAG. But, so they were hoping to be able to get some folks and I also passed that on to the new council member Alex, that Orange County Council of Governments is really a policy board that formulates policies to be taken to SCAG, which we've, as a small city, been very active. The second thing that he asked us to just take a look at is that our, our District 20 seat, which includes Los Alamos, Stanton, Westminster, Seal Beach, and us, is currently held by Andy Quoc and that he was concerned a little bit about participation and that we may, you know, have not had representation over the last year and a half on SCAG. And, and so that if anybody's interested, I, I'm a big fan, you know, I want to support Andy, but, but I think too, if there's some interest, you know, when a city council member from the next district or the next city comes and says, "Hey, look, I think you guys need more representation right now, there's some hard decisions to make," I just want to report that back to the city council and for consideration. And I think if anybody's interested, our first stop is to talk to Andy and see if he's interested and, and if he is, to get behind him and just ask him to, to step up in there. The Measure DD, I just wanted to thank the community for passing that overwhelmingly. You know, it, it's tough. When you run for office in the same year, you try to put something that has anything that says tax on the ballot, that's low-lying fruit and a lot of people, you know, give me a hard time and said, "You know, Trey, why would you even get behind something like that?" And I think it's because this council felt it was something that it had to be dealt with. And, and I just wanted to thank the community for overwhelmingly voting for that. One of the items that I, I kind of wanted to talk about is, you know, there's a couple items on closed session coming up. And obviously, we go into closed session because they're closed-session items and they're confidential, but, you know, something that, you know, I would say is that there's two items on there that has to do with the city clerk. And I, I just wanted to say, Wendy, I, I think that you're doing an outstanding job as you've been in this city clerk job as interim for quite some time, you've been doing this over the last year. We had another city clerk in from another city that was, been very helpful in tutoring or mentoring, I should say, is a better word, Wendy, through this process. And I, I just feel very good about going through whatever the council concludes and goes through in that. I just wanted you to hear from me, I think you're doing an outstanding job. I really appreciate it and it's been good to potentially promote from within into the city clerk job. The perils of that job is that you're in dealing with direct electeds now and sometimes we can be a lot of fun, so I think, good luck on that. One last thing I'd say about the vector control presentation earlier, and I, I didn't want to say it because I didn't want to be flippant, but I think the message there was dogs are a lot better than cats. And, you know, cats bring in the, you know, the typhoid and dogs kind of stave it and that's just a personal thing. Thank you, Maple, I'll see you at home. That's all I have.
Can I add one more thing?
Please.
I was going to leave it to Marilyn like I did the school district because I know she was the one who spoke. I would just like to say, we're moving forward with the Christmas decorations and those are one of the items on the Give Back. So, if you enjoy the Christmas decorations this year, please make sure that you include that on the Give Back so that we can have those for the next couple of years.
All right, cool.
One last thing.
Okay. We're going back, here we go.
No, just for a second, Maple is his dog.
Yeah, okay.
And it is the sweetest dog I think I've ever seen that happens to love cats.
All right. That's a small thing.
Do you want to mention the Christmas tree thing one more time? Are you okay with the lighting?
Well, you did see in, in the brochure on the back page, the Christmas tree lighting and it's going to be a lot of fun and we certainly hope that everyone turns out for it. And that's December the 1st?
Second.
Pardon?
Second.
Second, excuse me. And what time is it?
Three to seven.
From three to seven. And there's going to be snow. It may not be snowing around, but there's going to be snow there. So, it's going to be at St. Isidore Historical Plaza and we want to have a really good turnout from the community. This is being sponsored by many people in the community, so it isn't just a city thing, it's a Chamber of Commerce event. We have now young chamber members. What, what is that actually called, that group? Stephen?
It's called the Young Professionals.
Yes. And boy, they are so energized and exciting to watch because they're really going to be providing the community with some real interesting things. And the youth center is involved with this. I'm sorry, I should have had it in front of me and I didn't.
I'm one of the Young Professionals, so I really appreciate that. Sorry.
This is going, this is AYSO, the youth center, Chase Bank, Daper Rosenblatt and Litback, the medical center. Let me see here, Nadel. It's, it's Pacific Medical Buildings. There's going to be entertainment, refreshments, and of course, the tree lighting. And, you know, because of the cutbacks that we've made, because we were, we felt we were forced to do that, we have eliminated things. And thank you, Jerry, for reminding everyone about the, the Christmas decorations, we voted to do that this year. We haven't had a lot of the different programs during the holidays. And it isn't just Christmas, it's holiday time. And so, this is a way to bring this back. And it's a community event and we just want everyone to participate.
Marilyn, I get asked, the time period is like four hours, are they lighting one light at a time?
I'm not sure, how are they doing that? Do you know?
I, I just, people want to know what time specifically to be there. Just pace yourself.
From three to seven.
Thank you. The, the event itself takes place from three to seven. Snow will be available, snow playtime, there'll be a slide for the kids and, and young at heart to be able to enjoy. There will be entertainment, there'll be a main stage with entertainment, live entertainment, including choirs from Oak Middle School, McCalliff Middle School, and McGaw Elementary School, as well as the city's preschool program and some of the other community members and organizations. The ceremony will, the tree lighting ceremony will begin at 5:30 and, and that, there'll be some, some brief remarks followed by the official tree lighting and Santa will be joining us immediately following that. But the event does go from three to seven, there will be entertainment, refreshments, and, and activities throughout that four-hour period, so we hope that the community comes out at, at any point in time during that four-hour span.
Thank you. And I, I would like to say too, that Precious Life is at, Shelter is down at the end, the opposite end of the street, and they've traditionally had an open house on that Saturday. And so, they will have an open house and anyone that comes to this event is also invited to go down and, and take a look at Precious Life and, and the things that go on there. So, we, we realize that we are in great need of a community calendar so we don't have conflicts such as this, but hopefully, Precious Life will have a bigger turnout than they've ever had. So, we think it's going to be a win for everybody.
Great. Thank you. City manager or city attorney, no other announcement, city attorney, you're done for the night? Okay, all righty.
No, I, I was going to talk about state of the city and the Winter Wonderland and the community give back, but you handled all my items, so thank you.
All righty, good. We're going to go ahead and go into closed session and if we have anything reportable, we'll report out as we're going to be temporarily adjourned until we come back. Thank you.